School Board, Monday, November 9th, 2020. Dave, would you take the role?
I sure can. Inspector Aaron?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Diaz?
Here.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Here.
Inspector Walker?
Here.
Inspector Lollaberty?
Here.
Chair McClellan?
Here.
We have a quorum with seven present.
Thank you. Linda, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes, school board meeting agenda, committee of the whole meeting minutes, and school board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dave, would you take the role?
Yes, Inspector Lollaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
We have seven yeas.
Thank you, that is approved. For our quality in action tonight, we'll let Dr. Webb introduce our guests.
Well, good evening. I'm very fortunate to be able to introduce two of our high school students. And we have Eddie and Michael, and they're going to give their full introduction. But we want to give you a taste of what high schoolers are saying about the hybrid program in the secondary. So if you guys would like to make your way up, and I'm going to give you the question on the way up. So it's, tell us your name, your grade, and what activities you're in at the high school.
Hi, I'm Michael Dam. I'm a junior, and I am involved in basketball and baseball at the school.
Hello, I am Eddie Ortega. I'm a junior in high school, and I am involved in football and tract at the high school.
So tell us, and I'm going to give just a minute of background for the community. So our hybrid program works where students can come in two days a week, and they're doing distance learning three days a week. So do you come in Mondays and Thursdays, or Tuesdays and Fridays? So each comes in at a different set of two days. And then all of our students are distance learning on Wednesday. So here's your next question. Why did you choose hybrid? And what's your favorite part of hybrid?
I chose hybrid because it was a safe and reliable option, that I could still be in school and have that sense of school while staying safe. And my favorite part is my science labs, being able to actually do hands-on work while still being in class. Definitely a pro.
Favorite part of hybrid? Why did you choose it?
My favorite part of hybrid would be talking one-on-one with teachers if I have any questions. And favorite part would be...
You have a favorite class?
Favorite class? I'd say math. Math would be my favorite class.
Yeah, you just made the day of all math teachers. So I'm going to put you on the spot next to say, what needs to be improved to make hybrid better? How can we make hybrid better in the system?
I'd say being in class, being able to get a paper copy, while also having an online copy of whatever assignments you are completing would be beneficial to those who like one or the other.
Tell the community just a little bit more about that, because you have everything right now on your Chromebook.
Right.
Just explain that and that shift, because that's a shift for kids just over the last year.
Yeah, because you're used to going into class and getting a paper copy and/or an online copy in your classroom while... But that kind of hasn't happened as much in some classes this year. So I think it'd be helpful to those who like one or the other to get both.
Thank you.
I'd say one thing to improve on would be taking attendance, because usually I'm a forgetful kid on that. And it'd be really helpful if there would be like a notification telling you that you had to check in on that day.
Explain how attendance works, because usually in the old days, a student would show up to class and the teacher would mark you here or not. How does hybrid work?
Well, for hybrid, you take attendance every single day of the week. There's an app for it. You go on it and you click "take attendance", and there would be a little button that says, "Yes, I am here", and that'd be your attendance for the day.
So it's a self-check-in on attendance, so the teacher's not checking that box. The student says, "Hey, I'm here", and the teacher can verify. I have one more question for you. So there are seven people online, all of our school board members, and they like to ask questions too that I didn't prepare you for. So we're going to open it up to the school board. Just go easy on them, they're just juniors. But come on back, and they have a few questions for you.
I have a question. So have you, do you feel like you've settled into this pattern of learning? Because I suppose you have to learn to expect change, a drop of a hat.
Yeah, it's definitely different. But I didn't at first want to do the hybrid model when it first started. But after like the first few days, and having an actual lab in a science class, and knowing that I couldn't do that during distance, made me change my mind and realize, like, yeah, this is definitely more beneficial, in my opinion, to my learning than distance.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much for giving up part of your evening to come in and talk with us. This is really, really helpful to hear all of your comments. I'm just wondering, are you able to build in the, within the hybrid model, relationships with your teachers? I think that's an important part of, you know, the learning process. I'm just wondering if that's something you're able to do in the hybrid model.
Are you making connections with your teachers when you come in school? Is that working?
Yeah, yeah. That doesn't change, because rather you're, if you're online or offline, it's pretty good to make a relationship with your teacher.
That's good.
Yeah, they're, whether you're in hybrid or distance, you still get to see them every day or every other day, and you can still ask whatever questions you need to ask. And it's basically almost the same.
Good, thank you.
So if you had your choice, would you choose hybrid, or would you choose being in school full-time?
Hybrid. I'd choose hybrid.
Oh, interesting. Can you say why?
I like the days you get off. It makes me feel more independent.
Oh, it's like college.
Yeah, like college, yes.
Okay, cool. About you?
That's a hard question for me, but I personally am so used to the normal, everyday school. And I'm personally am not very good at being able to manage my time, giving all assignments for a week, and being able to put it all together. So being in school and having that done mostly for me is, I like it.
Yeah. I would feel free, like you too, not managing my time very well. So, thanks. Thanks for your answers.
Any last questions?
Yeah, I have the last questions. Two weeks ago, we had a middle schooler here, and when it got down to what she liked best about hybrid learning, she answered lunch. Now, I heard, Eduardo, I think you said math, and I didn't remember what you said as far as your favorite subject. But does lunch move up into one of the favorites?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, I'd agree.
Okay, you're men after my own heart, okay? That was my favorite subject in school.
I'm good.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm going to follow up on Bill. What is lunch like? Can you describe it for me?
Well, it's two pieces of bread.
Sure. It's essentially the same as before COVID, whereas it's just, you go in and you get your lunch. But instead of it being however many, let's say eight people at a table, it's designated to four, separated with plexiglass. And usually you don't get to talk to as many people, which is a little disappointing, but it's understandable. And instead of, when you're getting your food, punching in a code, you, at the beginning of the school year, you got a card with, that you could scan, that paid for your lunch.
Thank you. Dave, did you have something else?
I sure do. So we are fortunate tonight to have Principal Ochaki online. So he's going to give us just a preview of just some of the improvements they're also making to the distance learning program. So Chuck, thank you for getting the students here tonight. And can you give us an intro to some of the positive changes that you're making in the system?
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity. And Eddie and Michael, you guys were amazing, so thank you very much for coming in. And not taking a shot at your connections teacher, I was kind of expecting that, but I appreciate that. As we, right, so as Eddie had talked about, right, we, hybrid is really good, but there's some parts about it that we needed to change. And as we started to watch the COVID numbers rising, Leah and I, the middle school principal, pulled our site solution teams together, and said, "We really need to revise and look at our full distance learning plan" that we had rolled out in the fall. And I would tell you, I thought our plan was amazing when we rolled it out. Really thorough, thought out, had the input of 20 middle school and high school staff members that helped write it. But we pulled our site solutions teams together, and we also pulled that group of the distance learning team back together, and really went over what some of the changes were that we would need to make in our full distance plan. And that's just because as watching the numbers of COVID cases arise, well, and maybe I might be one of them, I'm in quarantine right now, watching the cases rise in both Minnesota, the county, and the city, we decided we needed to be proactive. So we have rewritten our distance learning plan. And Eddie, who was in school earlier today with me, got a preview of what it looked like, and really was changing the Google meets to make it a little more simple for everyone, including families, students, and teachers, and that every kid will have something that starts at nine o'clock, Monday through Friday. So our old plan was really confusing. That's really a big piece of what we wanted to roll out, so that our students can have some sort of consistency. And then something that Eddie talked about, it's almost like I asked him to talk about this, but the attendance piece, we're looking at changing that. So having our students take attendance still, but get a reminder, phone call, or email at five o'clock or six o'clock, reminding them to take attendance. So some of our students just jump right into their work, and they don't remember to take attendance, because it's on a different platform. So I feel like the secondary building is ready to move into a full distance learning plan that will continue to benefit our students and the families when we need to do that.
Thanks so much, Principal Ochaki. We are seeing some of the numbers rise throughout the county, so we are preparing really E-12 for that eventuality that we're seeing. So, and there'll be more, you know, family communication in the days ahead about all of our transition timelines. Just how about one round of applause for our two guests?
Thanks so much for coming in.
Well, well done.
Gentlemen?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stick your stickers.
They're picking up their Packer sticker on the way out, Jeff.
Awesome.
Have a good night.
Nobody in our, for a public listening session, and Dr. Webb will provide some highlights from the district. Dr. Webb?
All right. All right, next up, we have a superintendent update, and we have just some faces. Oftentimes, we don't get some inside photos from the fall, but we have our slideshow here, and Lisa's going to just transition over to our superintendent update. So can I just comment again how great it is to see students at our board meeting?
Yes.
So it's just, you just miss seeing all the kids and all of them coming in at the same time every day. And there's so many pieces that you miss that you have to keep taking the moments to celebrate where you can. So, so thank you. Our superintendent update for November 9th is as follows. We started the school year in a slow transition into a hybrid-for-all learning plan. So we began the first couple of weeks in September in distance learning, and we made sure that everybody had a device, everybody was set, everybody knew the plan. Everyone knew how to best be safe as we transitioned into the building. And for the past few months now, we've been in hybrid learning for all. We are, as we just mentioned, seeing the data start to tick up in the county, in the states, in our community as well, and even in our schools. So we are now discussing, we have a meeting tomorrow with our regional support team, about our transition timeline. And then we hope to get communication out to all families in the school district tomorrow afternoon. So as numbers rise, the first transition would typically be in that model, a middle and high school transition, and then following that is an elementary transition. And we will just continue to follow our county, school, and city data to make those best decisions. Next. We have a number of really great photos here. I'm excited to go to show a few highlights from around the district. So when you can't be in person, and you want to motivate the students to keep doing their best, and to have that growth mindset that they can do hard work, this was, this is what you can see as a teacher on your screen when your kids are showing their work from home. Just thought it was a great photo. Next. Even just the book selection, you can see everyone's still masked up, but still getting the TLC to choose that favorite book. Oprah Winfrey said, "Reading is a way for me to expand my mind, open my eyes, and fill up my heart." Next. Every day is a chance to learn. And here's one student working at their desk with a number of manipulatives on their diagram. Next. This chart says, "Reading gives us someplace to go when we have to stay where we are." Mason Cooley has that quote. Another great shot from a classroom here. I think that's Lori Schubert's classroom. Next. So one of our digital teachers, Anne Marie at Capoja, put this together. She had every student in the class design their own avatar. So how many of those elementary pictures do you still have in a drawer somewhere from your third grade class? And your whole class was standing there just like this, and the teacher was off to the side. So she said, "Let's do it in digital form, and what a great assignment. Build your own avatar, and then let's put it all together for our class photo." And I thought it was a great way to connect in a different way, and also build tech skills for kids. Next. I'm going to put in a plug for our educational benefits application. So this is an application that we typically do at the start of the year. And typically, everyone comes into our big cafeteria or lunchroom, and we have them fill out the form. Well, we couldn't do that this year. So we sent forms home. And then you have kind of a mixture of what comes back and what doesn't come back, especially if not all the students are coming in the building and returning forms. So I'm doing a special pitch tonight for families that if we could have you complete your educational benefits application, it's a huge boost financially for our district. So it actually can make a difference in a million dollars in funding for South St. Paul schools if the parents can get it filled out. And especially if you filled it out last year, we need you to do it again this year. So a shout-out, there's a number of things that you can also get discounts on for that application submission. So just a reminder for families. Next. We have a number of upcoming events. Here's an example of keeping that counseling office going, getting kids transitioning into their post-secondary experience. We're still coaching you on how to fill out your FASAF form. We're going to have a virtual night in English and Spanish for families, and that's coming up on the 12th and December 3rd, 12th of November and the 3rd of December. Next. We will also, on the 12th of November, have a 7:00 PM feedback session that I'll help facilitate online with our community if you have suggestions about the future uses and plans for Central Square. We just, you can go right onto our website to get the link if you'd like to participate. It's just a Zoom meeting. You can click on that 7:00 PM this Thursday. Next. All of our meeting materials are right on our website. This is the tree diagram to keep clicking on to get to all those resources if you want the meeting agendas and minutes. Next. I think that's it, and we'll go back to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. I would add one thing to your list, that Dakota County offers free COVID testing, and you can find that information on the Dakota County website.
Thank you.
Next is, on the agenda is our consent items, which include financial claims and staffing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dave, will you take the role?
I sure will. Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lollaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
We have seven yeas.
Thank you, that passes. We have no policy, and we have no business items tonight. So on to board member reports, committee updates, and have you seen a passion? I can't, we'll start with Patty.
Nothing for me tonight.
Wendy?
I just, as an election judge for South St. Paul, I want to thank everyone who came out and voted last week. Very proud of everyone. As you know, we had three seats up for our school board. I want to put a congratulations out to Nikki Lollaberty for getting her seat again for another term. We welcome John Rash and Monica Weber, who will be joining us in January. And of course, we will be missing Patty Bjorkland as she starts a whole new phase in her life. Really happy for her, congratulate her. And for our chair, Jeff McClellan, Jeff, you've done such a good job. We're so proud of you. You've become a really, really good friend, which I know you will stay as a really good friend. And I want to thank you for all your service, and we, as you know, we definitely will miss you come next year, but I know you will stay as our friends and guide us along. So thank you, Jeff, for your service too.
Thank you, Wendy. Chris?
Yes, we had an AMSD meeting last Friday. It was kind of a business-y meeting, if that's a word. It was a legislative session review, and we introduced the 2021 platform, and then other business things. But we also rolled out the date of January 8th for our session preview. This is something that's done on an annual basis before the legislative session starts, where we invite all of the legislators to come and just hear from AMSD what the priorities are, and just get to know them more than, more than anything. Of course, this is going to be virtual this year, but please, if you're interested, January 8th, and then there'll be more information, I can certainly get it to you if you're interested, otherwise it's out on their website. And then I had the exact same words that Wendy had for congratulations to Nikki. And boy, it's going to be hard to say goodbye to Jeff and to Patty, because they've been such valuable members of the school board, and they will certainly be missed.
Thank you, Chris. Bill?
A combination of what Chris and Wendy said together, "We're going to miss you, Jeff, and Patty, we're going to miss you", and "Congratulations, Nikki. Keep up the good work", and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Nikki?
Just a couple of things echoing everyone's sentiments in the sense of the election. And I heard this the other day, in that, you know, whether your candidate won or lost, the important piece that we need to remember from this whole thing is the incredible turnout of Americans who voted this time. And we need to acknowledge that and pat ourselves on the back for getting out there and doing our civic duty. One other piece was, there was a, and I'm not sure if it was an article or if it was an editorial, but it was in the Star Tribune a couple of weeks ago. And the headline of it was, "Teachers Need to Get Back to Work." And I could just feel the hair on the back of my neck rise, and I'm thinking, okay, this is either someone who's never taught or has never lived with a teacher, because I think teachers are working harder in their careers than they ever, ever have. And it certainly isn't what they signed up to do, but because of the kind of people they are, they're stepping up to the plate and, you know, meeting the challenge. And I just want to give a shout-out to all the teachers who are putting their heart and soul into their work. And I would be remiss if I also didn't mention the other staff members, the custodians, the kitchen, the administrative team, pairs, coaches. You know, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to miss a group, but thank you to all of you too for the work and dedication that you have to keep our school afloat and to take care of our South St. Paul kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Last but not least, Linda.
Yeah, what she said. That was amazing. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. That's all we have for tonight. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dave, will you take the role?
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lollaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
We have seven yeas.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
See you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.